Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras. Can you hear me?
Madam Chair, this is Jess with staff and I can hear you perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you. I wanted just to confirm with you, I'm going over the list and I show all of the commissioners present this evening, except for Commissioner Walsh. Are you seeing anything I'm not?
At one point, we did have all commissioners present, with exception of Commissioner Walsh. I am now not seeing Commissioner Wilson.
I'm CW.
Ah, okay. Okay. That would, that would be it. I believe, I believe we have all the commissioners. And we did have a message from Commissioner Walsh that we, from Commissioner Walsh that we did not anticipate her attendance this evening.
Got it. Okay, just double checking on that. Thank you, Mr. McNeely.
Since we haven't started yet, I would share with everyone, on the bottom left corner of my screen is a plus and a minus sign. Hitting the plus sign makes the document reviewing or being shared, just the document with none of the other stuff, so it's easier to read.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And I would just like, I am going to start the meeting when the clock strikes 5:30. But for everyone who can hear me, who has signed on to the meeting, I would ask in advance that all cameras be turned off and all microphones muted, please. All right, and with that, it is 5:30, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin by meeting, reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the January 3, 2024, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, the comment portion or comment function is not for discussion. It is only for communicating with staff if there is some kind, if you're having some issue. With that, thank all of you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand, Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the November 29, 2023 minutes. If there are no modifications or corrections, I will accept. Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On my page, 21, there is a reference about mid-page that is quoting me, and it says that she can make findings. I would prefer that say he.
And you know, Commissioner Wilson, I, I agree with your comments on that. Could you, what case was that on? I'm not readily seeing it. Like, I believe you, I just want to be sure.
This was on the, the cell tower site.
Yep, Madam Chair, this is Jess with staff. That's case number CUP 2361. So I see that as well.
Okay, so Mr. McNeely, if you see it, that is sufficient. If we could make that change, please? Any others? Okay, any others? All right, then I will accept a motion with that correction. So if somebody would like to make a motion with that correction.
Oh, make, what was, what was the date of those? Because I'm on a tiny laptop and can't pull it up.
November 29, 2023.
Okay, I move we approve the November 29, 2023 minutes.
With the modification.
With the modifications. Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Wilson for approval of the November 29, 2023 minutes, with the modification as stated. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion, motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing items. The only case on the agenda this evening that is appropriate for a consent agenda item is case number DRO. It's case number one, specifically case number DRO 22007. I'm going to ask if any of the commissioners wish to address this case this evening. Not seeing any, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on case, excuse me, on case number DRO 22002, or 007. And not seeing any, I will accept a motion in a second for approval, please.
Madam Chair, this is Jess with staff. We would ask that, this is, this is for an extension of a design review approval. So we'd recommend that that motion refer to approving the staff recommendation.
Got it.
Okay. I'll go ahead and speak up on this. I'd like to move for make a motion relative to DRO 22-007 that constitutes an extension as addressed previously by this Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Williams for approval as staff recommended for an extension of a design review approval. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The most, motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is CUP 23-062 and DRO 23-002.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with staff, and Bob Short of our staff is managing this case. So Bob, I thank you for sharing your screen and go ahead and present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, can everyone hear me and see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the American Trailer Sales and Service. That's CUP 2362 and DRO 2302. Sorry, my screen's not going forward quickly. There it goes. Okay, in this case, the property owner is Dennis and Sandra Gardner of Bedford, Pennsylvania. They actually currently live in the area, Donnie Park in Timberline, I believe. The applicant is Ian Braun of Civil Design Engineering of Flagstaff. The location of the property is at 11850 North Highway 89 in Timberline. The zoning is CG 10,000 and the size of the parcel is 4.62 acres. And their request is a conditional use permit for trailer sales and service. And that is identified in our zoning order that says RV boat and vehicle storage. However, in this case, the use just includes utility cargo and horse trailers, and that's for sale and for service, of course, on those. This also requires a design review, and that is for, that is to approve the design of the landscaping, the lighting, the signage, the fencing, and a new building proposed on the site. There's a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is the Timberland Fernwood area, north part of the Donnie Park area land. And you can see the property right there on Highway 89, and it's within a commercial area, it's in the, within the Copeland Lane Activity, Real Activity Center. And this is the subject property. As you can see, the, the trailer sales are actually have, it had, this has been operating for a while. You can see the trailers across the site. This is an existing geodesic dome that goes back to probably 70s or the 80s. And then this is toward the back of the site. This will be the location of the building back of this, this area. To the north, you'll find commercial zoning, and this is residential zone on these two sides. I'll go ahead and show a zoning map just to point that out. So this is commercial in red and the yellow is residential zone. Some background, this case, this is previously the side of Bill's Welding that has operated here or had operated here since 1985. And I believe there are probably other uses before that. Anyway, the last renewal for Bill's Welding was in 2015. The new owner was not aware that a conditional use permit was required until they applied for a signed permit, and then staff let them know that a conditional use permit and DRO was also required for this site. I have to say that the owner has done, has removed a great deal of outdoor storage and has vastly improved the site. This is a site plan. This is actually a site plan that shows landscaping and lighting as well. So if you look at the front, you can see landscaping proposed along the frontage of the site. And there, they are asking for a waiver. I'll discuss that in just a minute. So that's the 10-foot landscape's true. Previously, Bill's Welding, I think, under the last CUP renewal, had been approved for farm implements in lieu of landscaping. So there were farm implements along here, those have been removed. At this point, you can see the existing geodesic dome and the proposed building at the back of the site with the concrete pad and a porch. In this location, there are some existing trees around this building right here, and back there you can see some other existing trees, cottonwoods, and I believe some junipers. If you look at the notes, this is, this is basically what the applicant has provided in terms of lighting, is just pointing out the types of lighting that will be at each of these buildings, and the sign would be up here on the front. So this is the landscaping waiver that's requested. The waiver is requested to allow the existing trees and the new landscaping. I just showed you along the frontage to fulfill the landscaping requirements for the site. This will vastly improve the, the appearance of the site. As I said previously, there are farm implements along the frontage. So landscape will probably improve the, the appearance compared to that. And this is a picture of some of the existing trees. You can see another one back here, and there's a larger one further back on the site. In terms of outdoor lighting, as I said, the applicant shows the, the lighting on the site, on the site plan indicates it will be fully shielded and dark skies compliance. It's rather general in that sense. So basically, outdoor lighting on the site would include the lighting proposed on the new building. Any existing lighting previously proved the lighting permit. However, lighting that was not previously proved would be required to be removed or replaced by approved lighting. And also has some additional requirements. Basically, this is from the condition on lighting, and the purpose of this is to bring the site into compliance with the new lighting ordinance. This is something that was looked at by our dark skies specialist, and it indicates that all new class one and class three lighting would be fully shielded, and all new class two lighting would be fully shielded, and narrow spectrum amber LED. Some of the comments we got on this site is that the light over the door on the existing building was quite glaring, and I'll show you a picture of it in a minute. So there is also a condition that that would be replaced with a fully shielded lighting fixture. And all of this, of course, would have to be approved through the lighting permit. And this, this is a picture of the proposed lighting for the site. This is the proposed elevations. So you can see, it's, it's this larger building with the, with three bays that are toward the back of the site. As, so this is each of the elevations from each side. This is from the street, the west, the east side. This is also from the east side and the north side, and this is from the south side and the west side. So, having said that, that is not the colors that the applicant is proposing for this building, and these are the colors. Sorry, they didn't come out very well, at least on my screen. But the main building color is Hartford green. There's stone veneer wainscoting that is proposed, and it is this color, this stone veneer color. Then the trim is this furnished lake color. So this is not the, how the building will look, but this is the design of the building. So you can see the colors would be like this, and that wainscoting, stone wainscoting around the building would be like this, although the elevations are what I showed before. This is the proposed signage in the front of the building. You can see it is tan, is a tan color. Typically, in our lighting ordinance or actual signage or sign ordinance, it does not allow you to have these darker colors. Typically, it would say that these, that the, the letters would be lighter colors, and the background would be darker so that the light would shine through the letters, and it would create less lighting, basically. So, however, in this case, this would be the night view. So basically, there are diodes inside the letters so that only those letters shine, shine out. All these letters are eliminated. So that makes it compliant with their ordinance. This is a, a sign that has already been installed. It's, it's, it hasn't been, it's not an approved sign. It doesn't meet the DRO requirements. The applicant can certainly come back with a different sign, and staff can approve that later. But this sign does not meet the design guidelines at all. It's not natural colors. It's a, it's a pretty bright sign. So that would have to be replaced, possibly redesigned. And you could also see in this picture that there, this is a light that's not shielded. Probably, I'm not sure what type of light it is, but that would have to be removed with the fully shielded lighting. All right, in terms of fencing, there is a slatted fence that goes along the entire south and west property lines. Those are the property lines adjacent to residential. So that, that would remain, of course. And the outdoor storage, outdoor storage on this side previously did cause quite a few issues. So outdoor storage is conditioned to be either behind that building. The building's quite large, and there's quite a bit of space at the back. And also behind screened by a slatted fencing. That might require some more fencing. I believe the applicant is proposing a little bit more fencing in that area. So that is to make it not visible from the highway and less intrusive to other property owners as well. So this is that slatted fencing. As you can see, this is the west side of the site. So it goes all the way around the western, south sides of the site. And as you can see, a lot of, this is, this has been vastly improved. There isn't a lot of the, the storage that was here previously with the previous owner. Applicant's also proposing this metal rail fence, and this is in areas that is not required to be screened from residential. So the area, it'd be along the north side and along the frontage of the property. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within 500 feet of the subject property were notified and invited to a meeting held on the site on May 19, 2023. That's 30 property owners in all. Four neighbors attended the meeting and provided comments. Staff did provide, provide some comments that were missed early on to you yesterday. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at those. The applicant at the meeting reported that, in general, the neighbors agreed that the applicant had improved the property. There were some concerns expressed, though. One is lighting, that existing light at the office that I showed earlier. Fencing and screening, items stored on the property, including RVs and semi-trailers. The applicant indicated they don't, they don't intend to store any RVs or semi-trailers on the site. There are semis that do come and, and deliver trailers to the site. The kind of the concern was noise and odors in the repair shop. Deliveries and idling, that was something that was a, an issue with the previous owner on the site, that trucks would come, according to these commenters, and they would leave the trucks idling for a long time, like for hours at a time. The other, another issue was driving surfaces. There is a condition that indicates that driving surfaces will be addressed at the time of building permit. So when they have a building that any kind of driving surface, and that would be to access the new building, would have to be approved by the Community Development and also the Engineering Division. These are the findings for a conditional use permit. I've addressed those in the staff report along with the findings for a waiver, for the landscape waiver. If we have any questions about that, we can discuss that. And in order to approve a design review overlay, a DRO application, the commission simply has to determine that the development is consistent with the Donnie Park Timberland Fernwood Area Plan Design Guidelines, which are listed primarily, some of them at least are listed in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 23062 and DRO 23002 with the recommended conditions. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Antiveras. I am not seeing any questions from commissioners. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission at this time. Please state your name and address for the record and go ahead. Mr. Short, do you see the applicant? No one's raising their hand. The applicant certainly does not, okay.
I see the owner is here. I see both of you.
Yep, I do now. I see hands raised now, yes. Mr. Gardner, please go ahead. State your name and address for the record. And I would like to ask that, at the end of your comments, I would like to ask you if you understand and agree with the conditions that have been written into the staff report, I'd like you to comment on that, please. And with that, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Dennis Gardner, and I'm representing American Trailer Company, referring to the property there, 11850 North Highway 89, parcel number 301-68-002K. Yes, I have received this, the staff report, and we do not have any objection to any of the conditions as it was written in the report. I do want to say thanks to the folks there that have put it together and put the approval in. And I apologize not answering right away. I thought our engineer was going to take, take the questions first. But anyway, I just want to say that, you know, we're, we're excited to be a part of the Flagstaff area there and Coconino County. And we did get the pleasure of meeting some of our neighbors and addressing some of their concerns. And I believe, at this point, you know, we didn't have any issues that was, that we didn't address upfront. Going through the report I, that I did receive, we agreed to all the changes that they're recommending. And we would just like to see, you know, be able to take our, the facility that we had there, knowing that the changes that have been made and, and, you know, making the property look a lot better now to take it to another level. The, the building that we're currently in is very dated, and we've had a lot of issues trying to stop the leaks and, and to shore up the building and things like that. So really in dire need of getting the new building in there, and then the fact that we've been there and not having a sign makes it really tough for the customers to find out who we are. So we're excited to go to the next level, and hopefully we can, you know, be part of the team there.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. This is Chair Antiveras. I'm going to ask if there are any commissioners that have questions for you to please raise their hand. I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. Gardner, you can put your hand down. Oh, excuse, I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner. Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the applicant, since we've been talking about the process of getting agreement and understanding regarding conditions, because noise and idling were regarding conditions, because noise and idling were brought up from the neighbors. I would propose a condition that says noise shall not exceed 50 decibels at the residential property lines. And vehicle idling shall be kept to a minimum on the property. Does that seem like a reasonable condition?
Yes, ma'am. So, so what we shared with the, the neighbors when we had that discussion is, you know, I, I don't want to create any friction there with our neighbors. We want to be very, you know, upfront with our neighbors and, and explain where we were at, what we're doing. And part of that was when we bring our trucks in, that we get these deliveries, we, we require that they be there either between eight and five. When they come in, we pull them toward the back of the property there. We have them shut their trucks off. We unload them and then as soon as they're, they're unloaded, they start their truck and they leave. No one parks there overnight. We do have our own truck that we do run occasionally. But with the trucking industry, the way it is right now, it hasn't been beneficial for us to do that. That truck sits there. It doesn't run unless we absolutely go for a, for a run. But we, we have tried to honor that. And, and even before it came up, you know, I, we, we're very conscientious of what we do there. We don't make a lot of noise. We don't let the vehicles run. So yes, I, I, I have no problem with adhering to, you know, trying to keep the, the noise down and, and and keeping it running to a minimum.
Thank you. And, you know, one consideration that we have to think about is if this property changes hands. If, you know, if you finally get that house in Hawaii and decide enough, we want to make sure that we have conditions that apply to the next folks as well.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Short?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I did want to mention that the 50 decibel noise level is generally something that we apply to residential properties, you know, like campgrounds and things like that. In this case, that's a very, that's a very low level. For example, 65 decibels is the sound of conversational speech. So that might be a little bit low for a, this is a commercial site and there are commercial activities going on. The idling issue, I think, is one more that was an issue with the previous property owner. So we, I haven't heard that with this property owner yet. So we may want to consider, commission may want to consider something a little higher than that. Or, you know, maybe, maybe misunderstanding that this is a commercial property. And a truck idling there, I mean, even a truck coming into the site, like a semi that comes to deliver trailers, that's going to be a relatively high noise for a very short time. So just wanted to make, make sure and bring that up.
Okay. Mr. Short, this is Chair Antiveras. You've made a good point that this is a commercial site, not a residential site. Have, I do not, in my years of being on the commission, I don't have a memory of us putting a limit on that. Do you?
Madam Chair, ironically, the site, the two lots down, which is zoned by Commissioner Wilson, there was a, a limit on that site, but that was, like that was 65 at the property line. So that was one that was a concern about noise from the shooting range, which is indoors. I think that was actually even a little bit more than that, but we did have that 65. That even may be a little bit more than this property owner could, could achieve, considering the fact that there are trucks there that do deliver the trailers. And there are diesel trucks.
Yeah, exactly. And, and that's why I'm a little hesitant to put an actual number on here. This is certainly something that can come up in commission discussion. And I believe Commissioner Ruggles would, if we need to put a number, we probably could, but I just wanted to get your input on that. So we're just going to kind of leave it there for now and we'll bring this up at commission discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, and this is, this is Jess with staff. I, I would need to interject here to, to make sure the commissioners fully understand. This site is zoned CG commercial general. The only reason we're having this discussion about a conditional use permit is because the use, vehicle sales does require a conditional use permit in the, in the commercial general zone. However, there are many other uses that would be permitted by right, would not be coming before you for a conditional use permit. Any type of retail use could have deliveries by semi trucks. RV storage is a permitted use by right. So that's just kind of how, how the Sasha's got made on updates over time to the zoning ordinance on what, what uses. We try to be consistent. We have staff tried to make good recommendations on, on what's kind of some consistency in our zoning districts. So we would point out that there are uses permitted by right here that would not require a conditional use permit. So not this level of review that would generate the same amount of noise with deliveries from semi trucks. So may, maybe something just to the effect of limiting idling, but trying to put a cap on noise generated by this use is a little bit inconsistent with the uses that are permitted by right that would generate the same amount of noise.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. McNeely. This is Chair Antiveras. And you, you just confirmed the angst that I had. So thank you for that. And when I say the angst that I had, specifically the angst that I have putting a level on it. So with that, I'm going to ask if there are any other commissioners that have questions for the applicant. Not seeing any, I'm going to ask if there is anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission on the, let me go back. Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand going up and then down.
I'm sorry, that was a, a double click.
Okay, it's okay. That said, I'm going to now ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on the, on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. All right. I am not seeing any and I'm scrolling carefully.
I would like to address the commission.
Oh, okay. Can you identify yourself? I'm trying to find you in the participant list.
Yes, I had to call.
6994171?
Yes, I am. I, I couldn't get my microphone to work on my computer right, so I'm calling in by phone.
Okay, and that is absolutely fine. If you would please state your name and address for the record. And then you will have three minutes to address the commission. Mr. McNeely, I would like to ask that you time it three minutes and give a warning at the two minute mark, please. And please go ahead, sir.
My chairman and council members, my name's Tom Heeb and I reside at the property, residential property directly to the south of American Trailer at 11820 Sunflower Lane. And, you know, I objected to the CUP or the condition of use permit as written, or maybe as not written, I should say. Because I don't think it provides enough detail about the business and its operation or any consideration of the impacts it might have to the adjacent properties. You should have a letter in your packet that briefly summarized my concerns. Sounds like you just got it yesterday. I hope you had a chance to look at it, so I won't repeat it now. But I would like to say a couple of things about my concerns in more detail. My property is approximately 166 feet wide, north to south, and 600 feet deep, east to west. I have a common property, a boundary with the American Trailer of about 600 feet. In that smaller area along Highway 89 that's zoned commercial, the American Trailer property is the largest commercial property. And I have by far the longest property boundary between commercial and residential zones. So I am the public that is most affected by this development. And as I said, I'm concerned that this has, application hasn't made any effort to minimize impacts to my property or to provide enough information to evaluate what those impacts might be. My home sits about 500 feet back from Highway 89. And the north side of it, which includes a family room and bedroom, is about 40 feet from the American Trailer property line. It was built in 96 and I've owned it since 2005. And I suspect the reason it's located where it is is towards the back of the property is to get some separation between the highway and the existing commercial building. I believe that the new building, which is much larger and farther back on the property than the existing one, plus the expansion of services will increase traffic, noise, exhaust, fumes, dust, and the storage of materials and equipment on the property and push them much closer to my home, if not directly adjacent to it. You know, I noted in the zoning ordinance that a conditional use is a land use that because of its inherent nature, extent, and external effects requires special content, special care in the control of its location, design, and methods. I also note in your design guideline DR 19 that adequate visual buffering should be provided between the development and adjacent residentially zoned land. And I don't think that's been done here. I don't think special care.
You've got about one minute left. Just want to give you a warning.
Well, I hope you, I could get a little extension on that because I am, like I said, the property owner that's most impacted by this. You know, I was surprised to see that there's no indication on the site plan of where the driving and parking surfaces will be. And that the location and type of parking and driving will be determined as part of the building with no input from the public. You know, my concern again is that these will push the prop traffic closer to my home. You know, while I'm in my home, the traffic noise from Highway 89 is unnoticedable, but the noise from any vehicles on the back of the trailer sales property is very noticeable. And I'm particularly concerned about noise and fumes and the possible dust created by semi trucks and other diesel trucks. I appreciate what the council member said about a decibel limit and, and idling. I don't know how that could be enforced. I think you, you're better off to do some kind of either buffers or or, or, or identify areas on the property where you will do have parking and, and and roadways and areas where you won't.
Sir and Madam Chair, we're, we're at three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McNeely.
You know, I, I have, I'd like to note to show that I've not been allowed time to express my concerns.
Sir, the record will reflect that when I read the meeting rules and procedures, this is Chair Antiveras, by the way. I want the record to reflect that when I read the meeting rules and procedures, it was stated there that when the public addressed the commission, there would be a three minute time limit. I want to state that before you began, I also gave that same direction. So anyone who wishes to address the commission will have three minutes. That goes to everyone. So with that, I'm going to ask.
Could I say something?
Sir, you are done. Sir, you are done. You're done and you're out of order. I'm going to ask if there is anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this evening? If so, please raise your hand. I will call on you and you will have three minutes to address the commission. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public and I'm going to open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Best, you're up first this evening. Would you please start the discussion?
Thank you. Seems like an appropriate location for this business with the challenges of adjacent residential properties. One question, I've, I've got a couple of questions that I would ask to be answered. One would be, is there any setback of commercial activity from the residential property lines? I'd also like to point out to the gentleman that he can't appeal any decision that's made tonight within two weeks and he can talk to staff about doing that. I, I wonder if Commissioner Ruggles would like to talk about decibels and I would still move forward with a condition that says vehicles idling, vehicle idling shall be kept to a minimum on the property.
Okay.
So my first question is setback and then perhaps when Commissioner Ruggles comes up, he could talk about decibels.
Okay. Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras. Would you please address Commissioner Best's question on setbacks, please?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, we, we've got Bob. He's been digging into this, this case deeper. So Bob, I'd let you, if you had any comments you wanted to make first on, on what the setback requirements are here and what kind of situation we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Commissioner Best and Madam Chair. And in this case, as you can see on the site plan I have up there, you can see the, the trailer is displayed for sale. We don't really see anything in the zoning ordinance that indicates that there's any setbacks for items that are for sale like that. For buildings, certainly there, there's a setback. For parking, even there would be a setback, but I don't see anything that would require a setback. If that's what in fact, Commissioner Best is asking. I don't see any, anything that would require a setback for items on display for sale.
Commissioner Best, does that answer your question? This is Chair.
It does. Thank, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we are at commission discussion, Commissioner Best. So do you have any, anything else that you would like to add at this time?
No, I, I will just wait and see if other people come up with other ideas. We obviously have a, a conflict here between the expectations of a commercial property owner and adjacent residential properties. So let's see if we can come up with any ideas that will help.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Commissioner Tohe?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions right now and I'm just listening for a discussion right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you, Chair Antiveros. I'll address the, the sound level question first. With commercial zoning like this, we have never imposed a sound level except in the case of Commissioner Wilson's indoor range. One thing that I will say relative to that, if he were to come before the commission for the same thing today, he wouldn't have to come before the commission. And he wouldn't have had to deal with a sound level of 50 dB A at the property line. There was no question in my mind that he would meet that, by the way, which he did very successfully. The other thing is that considering the, the work that would be done with, with trailers in this instance, I've got a pretty good idea of the kind of mechanical work that would be done and also any hydraulics. I, I have worked with high pressure hydraulics in the past and as far as the issue of noise goes, that's going to be pretty minimal. You'll have more noise from delivery on the property. But the distances involved are going to mitigate a lot of that. And the other thing is we have no noise requirements within the zoning ordinance for CG 10,000. Another thing, I looked at the setback requirements prior to this also. And to the sides and the rear of the lot, because it is CG 10,000 minimum, there, there are no setbacks. I think the front setback is only 20 feet for an application or for a, an application like this, whether it's five acres or whether it's 10,000 square feet, it's, it's the same. And I'll, I'll make one other comment about coming up with any sound level. I think it would be, one, premature, given the nature of, of the work that would be performed. And two, it would be considered rather arbitrary. We, we don't have anything other than sound levels that we have imposed as conditions with cottage industries, yes, because those are primarily in residential or agricultural residential areas. Commercial, as Jess McNeely pointed out to us, there are a lot of uses that are permitted by right that do not require a CUP. That could be considerably noisier, in my opinion, than what would occur here within the new building that is being proposed and the type of work that is going to be done. The other thing I would have to say is that anyone who buys property adjacent to commercial zoning should exercise due diligence relative to the kind of uses that may occur. zoning should exercise due diligence relative to the kind of uses that may occur on that property that abuts their property. So at that point, I would like to turn it over to others on the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Vice Chair Burton?
Um, I, so far, I agree with anything that has been said by my fellow commissioners. I also have a mind that it is a commercial zone property and as far as I know, has been historically, has been commercial zone property. So I, I mean, I think it's an appropriate location as far as access on the main road there and I don't see any problem, problems with this use, especially since it is commercial. And as it's been repeated a few times this evening, there are other uses that wouldn't even need to come here for any kind of permit that would be far noisier than what's being proposed. So those are, those are just my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Right now, I think it's an appropriate use for commercially zoned property in this location. So that's kind of where I stand.
Okay, and Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to start by commending the applicant for the creative solution to the sign lighting problem. I've never seen that done before and I think that's a great solution that both achieves the dark sky requirements and gives them the maximum visibility. So good job on that. As has been mentioned, I own a property just a couple of parcels north. We did extensive sound studies on that property before we decided to build, where we took sound samples for an hour at a time, three times, three different times a day on three different days to find out what is the actual background sound levels that exist from Highway eighty-nine there and that averages about seventy-seven dB. So anywhere, and that was taken from the middle of my parcel, which would, in this case, be reflected by about where that geodesic dome building is in this parcel. So at that point, the average sound levels being generated by traffic on Highway eighty-nine is approximately seventy-seven dB. So trying to impose anything in the fifty or fifty-five range, number one would be, as has been pointed out, kind of arbitrary and number two, very difficult to ever confirm because the background noise levels far exceed that. So it would be difficult to enforce or prove and I would not be in favor of any kind of a noise limit. And as has been mentioned, the setbacks on this particular property are basically zero. The property to the northwest of this one does have zero setbacks. You can see it right on the property line. So I think it's a good move by the applicant's part to have positioned the building, the new building location, as far north as they have, so that it will provide some additional distance between them and the residential property to the south. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. This is Chair Antiveras. I'm going to address the applying a decibel level at the property boundary. I am not in favor of that and the reason that I'm not is because it would be arbitrary. This commission has not played, has not done that, except for Timberline shooting range. And as Commissioner Ruggles pointed out, that is a use that would not even come before this commission again. So I am not in favor of doing that and I don't think it's a good idea to. I do want to say that Commissioner, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Ruggles on his assessment that this was commercially zoned property prior to the gentleman that spoke in the public purchased the property. So it was a use that was already there. With that said, I am in support of this application. I have read through the staff analysis. I agree with the findings. I have gone through this very carefully. I can make the findings that need to be made to approve this and at best, to do anything with the sound would be to do what Mr. McNeely suggested, which is no trucks idling long-term. That is the farthest I can go with any kind of sound enforcement on this. So with that, I can approve with the conditions as written and I'm going to go ahead and go back, run through the commissioners again. And Commissioner Best, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, it's probably not quite the right time, but I would move to approve with the condition vehicles, vehicle idling shall be kept to a minimum on the property. I think I agree that we've worked through the effort at sound mitigation and it doesn't look that, like that's going to work. Do we need, we need two motions here, right, for the C U P and the D R O?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I'm willing to make that at any time when the.
Okay, you know what, Commissioner Best? How about if I do this? Hold that right there. I'm going to ask if any of the other commissioners, now based on what the conversation has been, if there are any other commissioners that wish to comment or are we ready for a motion? If, if one of the commissioners is not ready for a motion, okay. Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of comments briefly on this. I agree with Commissioner Best's suggestion. And the other thing is that you kind of sidetracked me a little bit. One of the things that I had made notes on was the sign, just as Commissioner Wilson had commented. And I would like to commend the applicant for this because typically, when you see a sign like this, it is usually with a light background, which is lighted from within. And what is being proposed, I think, is a much better solution to coming up with a sign that is very complimentary to our dark sky ordinance. So other than that, that would be the only comment I have to add to the design review. So the lighting issue has been very well addressed in that, as it should be. And other than that, I can also make the findings. It's that simple.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I'm going to ask, Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is still up, but I'm thinking it's because you just haven't put it down yet, right? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So Commissioner Best, would you please proceed with the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve C U P twenty-three zero six-two with the eight conditions, conditions as written before us.
I'll second that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson got in there first. Okay, I have a motion for approval of C U P twenty-three zero six-two by Commissioner Best, a second by Commissioner Wilson with the modification to the conditions in the staff report to state vehicles idling on the property shall be kept to a minimum. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye, C U P twenty-three zero six-two. The motion passes unanimously. Now I will accept the motion on D R O twenty-three zero zero two, please.
Madam Chair, like.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would propose we approve D R O twenty-three zero zero two as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Best to approve D R O twenty-three zero zero two as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is C U P twenty-three zero six-seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While Zach is getting his screen up there, thanks, Zach. This is a conditional use permit for cottage industry within the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood area plan area. Zach is managing this case. He's got his screen shared. So go ahead, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Mr. McNeely, can you hear me?
Hear you great. Thanks.
Thank you. This is case number C U P twenty-three zero six-seven. The applicant and property owner for this is Cole Campbell and the property is located at five-eight-five-zero East Copeland Lane. That's in the Timberline area. Parcel size is two-point-two-seven acres and it is in the A R two-and-a-half zone. That's agricultural residential zone. And this request is for a conditional use permit for a cottage industry. Here's a vicinity map, so this is Highway eighty-nine and here is Copeland. Just behind this commercial area where there is a shooting range and a self-storage is the subject property. It is vacant and properties to the west and south are developed with single-family residences. The property across from Copeland is for stormwater mitigation. And here's an aerial photo of the subject property, so you can see it's vacant. These are the surrounding land uses. This is a photo of the subject property taken from Copeland Lane, so we're looking south. And for the proposed use and development, this request is for a cottage industry for metal, metal and wood fabrication. So the applicant primarily would produce railings, gates, decorative art pieces, and other similar products. The equipment used for this would be small-scale saws, sanders, welders, and drill presses. And the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, eight to five. There would be deliveries of materials approximately once or twice a month. And the applicant would primarily be the only person working on site. Occasionally, they would have one other person employed there to help with larger projects. So the development would include a workshop and a home. So in the immediate term would be forty-eight-hundred-square-foot workshop, square-foot workshop, a thousand square feet in a loft would be for a dwelling and the workshop would be insulated to mitigate sound. In the future, and the applicant hasn't stated at what time they would build this, but the applicant does propose a twenty-six-hundred-square-foot main dwelling. So here's a site plan and north is actually at the bottom, so we're kind of flipped upside down. So Copeland is where the driveway would come off to the workshop right here. The workshop would include four bays, the first two of which would be used for the cottage industry and then the other two would be used for storage, for personal items for the applicant. And above bay four would be this one-thousand-square-foot living space. You can see on the property, this is focused sort of on the eastern property, side of the property where it's adjacent to self-storage and further away from the other single-family residential uses. And these are examples that the applicant provided of what the structure would look like. Or citizen participation, the applicant notified neighbors within a quarter mile of their property. So that was sixty-one neighbors notified in total. And they held a meeting for those neighbors discussing what their request would be and seeking input on that. Thirteen neighbors did attend and neighbors did not express any concerns. Staff also did not receive any direct contact on the case from neighbors. Excuse me. The zoning ordinance has a number of requirements that a cottage industry meets so that it's consistent with a primary single-family residential use and being within a single-family residential neighborhood. And so I've detailed in the staff report and I've also laid that out on this slide here. The application does meet all of those requirements and if the commission has any questions about these, I'm happy to go into them, but the application does meet these requirements. As far as long-range plan compliance, the comprehensive plan and the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan support cottage industries when they're compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And furthermore, the area plan directs hearing bodies to consider all impacts from the proposed cottage industry. So staff does find that this request is consistent with these area plans. There are four findings of fact that the commission needs to make in order to approve a C U P and staff is able to make all of those. And my analysis is in the staff report. If you have any questions about that, then I'm happy to go into it. But for now, staff will recommend approval of case C U P twenty-three zero six-seven with the recommended conditions of the staff report. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. This is Chair Antiveras. Commissioner Wilson?
Mr. Schwartz, was I clear in understanding that the the shop itself and the processes being done there are probably no more than what a residential shop might have anyway? Is that an accurate representation?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wilson, do you mean as far as the tools used inside the workshop?
Yeah, so the impact of those tools, I believe I know people who have shops probably larger and more equipped than what you just described on their residence properties. And it sounds like that's what you're saying this shop is also is not something beyond what would normally be in a residential scale. Is that correct?
Understood, yes. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking to see if there are any other hands raised. Not seeing any, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening? If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I will also ask if you have received the staff report, read it, understand and agree with the conditions. And with that, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. This is Cole Campbell at fifty-eight-fifty East Copeland. Just want to thank everybody. Thank you for your time. We are really excited to join this neighborhood and for the opportunity you guys are giving us. Yes, I have read all the documents and I understand and agree. Yeah, we just thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask if any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Not seeing any hands raised, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening on this case? And not seeing any hands, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public, open it at Commission Discussion. And Commissioner Best, you're up, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I printed out the cottage industry ordinance because I was a little confused about the square footage. It seems like in the, it seems to be in compliance and it seems like in the long run, if you built a house, then you could use more of this building as a shop. And that seems to be okay. I was a little questioning it at first, but I, I think I resolved the questions that I had. So we'll see if any other commissioners have any comments. Thanks. At this point, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Tohe?
Thank you. Good evening again. I think the only thing that really is good to hear is that there aren't very much concerns from the neighbor, from the neighborhood. And I think that's of most concern to me as far as this being a cottage industry. So I'm happy that. So I'm happy that it's been vetted that way. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. Yeah, a couple of, a couple of comments on this. I know that there has probably been some expression of concern about noise levels. I'm very familiar with the type of work that would be done. And just as Commissioner Wilson has stated, there are people who have home facilities, shops, that are as extensive or even bigger. We've also had cottage industries similar to this in the past that were the type of work that would create noise levels. But I'm going to come back to one thing that Commissioner Wilson brought up quite well. And that is the fact that it is still a short distance over to Highway 89. And even with the storage facility there, which does attenuate some of the sound from 89, nevertheless, one of the things that we have done in the past, occasionally with cottage industries, is to establish a 50 DBA limit at the property line. Because of the higher noise level associated with a highway, then I do not think that is appropriate. And the fact of the matter is, the construction of the building will help that tremendously. It is very similar to the machine shop that we approved in the Pittman Valley area off of Old 66. And some of the measurements we got there with sound levels from the interstate, which were higher, but very similar to what you would probably get here, did not indicate that there was any necessity to come up with a, a sound level as a part of the conditions. It's just very difficult to sort it out as to what is coming from the shop, and what is highway noise, and how much does each one contribute to the other? So anything beyond what we have in the conditions right now would be inappropriate, difficult to enforce, and could be seen as somewhat arbitrary. Beyond that, I think that I can make the conditions without a problem. I think it will be a compliment to the neighborhood. One thing that I did not mention in the previous discussion for the use permit is the fact that this is within a designated activity center. The activity center is somewhat well loosely defined, but nevertheless, I think the area, considering the storage facility, Timberline Firearms, and American Trailer, this constitutes the activity center for this area and is an appropriate use and an appropriate cottage industry for this location. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Vice Chair Burton?
I don't have any problems. I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
I also can make the findings and don't have any issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
As with the previous CUP, I believe this activity will be a welcome addition to our community, and I can make the findings.
Thank you. And this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can make the findings and will be voting to approve it. And I do just want to add that Commissioner Ruggles beat me to the comment that I found this use very similar to the one that we approved in Pittman Valley just not long ago. So I do agree with his assessment that attaching any decibel limits would, would be arbitrary because they are so similar, and we did not put any on that one. So that said, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'll go forward to this. I move to approve CUP 23-07, oh, I'm sorry, CUP 23-067 as stated, condition stated by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Williams to approve CUP 23067 with conditions as written in the staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Will, Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. The motion passes unanimously. And to the applicant, good luck. I think you've got a really great thing going here. The next item on the agenda is case CUP 23074.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with Community Owned Staff. This case is a conditional use permit for two model homes in the Kachina Village area. Kelly from our staff, Kelly Bingham, is managing this case. I see she has her screen shared, so go ahead, Kelly, with your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is CUP 2374. The property owner for this case is Tobar Springs LLC. The applicant and representative in this case is Ian Braun of Civil Design and Engineering, or CDNE. The property location is 2212 and 2200 Seva Spring Trail, and that's in the Kachina Village area. The parcels are each about 0.18 acres, or a total of about a third of an acre. And the zone is RS 6,000, which is single-family residential, 6,000 square foot minimum. And the request is for two model homes, one on each lot. As you were briefed on in the study session last month, model homes are used just as a display to sell the homes in a new subdivision. This is a very common use. And in fact, it's often approved as part of a subdivision plat if the model homes are planned out ahead of time. Here's a vicinity map to orient you a little bit. Here's I-17 running north to south. And you can see these two properties located in the Kachina Highlands subdivision, which you can see the lot lines have been plotted. Currently, these are under construction, as far as I'm aware. Here are the subject properties. And here's the site plan that the applicant is proposing. These are just normal residential homes that will be used to sell other homes. And here are some elevations, so you can see kind of what they would look like. And the applicant was able to provide some considerations to impact that we wanted to share with you tonight. This would operate on normal business hours with some occasional events. Parking for those events would be contained within the subdivision so that they wouldn't disturb any surrounding neighborhoods. There would be one to two employees on site daily, and most of the traffic would be by appointment. And the emphasis here is that this really doesn't have any more impact than a normal residential development, a single-family home. And in fact, in some cases, it might be less. The applicant notified two property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, had a meeting on November 2nd, and no members of the public attended or submitted comments. Staff has also not received any comments. Here's the staff analysis. This was in the staff report, but I'm happy to go over any of this if you would like. And the findings of fact for a CUP. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 2374 with the recommended conditions in the staff reports. Are there any questions from the commission?
All right, Ms. Bingham, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am not seeing any hands raised, so I'm going to say there are no questions for you. I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record. And Ian Braun, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is Ian Braun. I am the applicant's representative and the engineer of record for the Kachina Highlands subdivision. My, my office is located at 618 East Route 66, Flagstaff, Arizona, 86001. At this time, we'd just like to thank staff for preparing this case. We'd like to thank the commission for their time. I spent some time with the owner this afternoon reviewing the conditions of approval, and we have no issues. We are fine with the conditions of approval, and I will, I will leave my comments at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Braun. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant's representative? And I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening on this case. If so, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, I'm going to close it to the public and open it at Commission Discussion. Commissioner Best, go ahead and start us off.
Well, this development has certainly been a long time coming, and hopefully it will add some housing that we desperately need, so I can make the findings and happy to see it get going.
Thank you. Commissioner Tohe?
I ditto what Commissioner Wilson said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
I can definitely make the findings for this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I also can make the findings.
Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. And this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can make the findings. With that, I will accept a motion for this case.
I'll move that we approve CUP-23-074.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP 23074. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
I correct my last comment to Commissioner Best, and, and I vote yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Tohe, I'm laughing with you. Please note that not at you, because I, I do, I do the same thing. So thank you. Commissioner Tohe voted aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. The motion, the motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, my clock shows 6:49 PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year. And I would point out that this makes 52 items, public hearing items that the commission has heard for 2023. That was 40 CUPs, four DROs, six zone changes, and two amendments to the zoning ordinance. So thank you to all of you for your service and for having a great year.
Wow, thank you for that analysis, Mr. McNeely. We, we've been busy.
Yes.
But fortunately, and I do appreciate Commissioner Wilson moving many of them, we, starting the consent agenda. So that has helped move these along very expeditiously. So thank you, and good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.